Called the May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen Riverton City Council Finance Committee Meeting to Order at six forty-five P. M. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims?
Motion to consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five, and four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for the April twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Manual checks in the amount of eight hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, for a total of one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents to be paid.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anybody have any discussion about the bills or questions?
I don't.
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes and meeting adjourned.
The May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Would Councilmember Martinez lead us in the pledge of allegiance and after that, Councilmember Larson will give us an indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve here in the city of Riverton, as councilman, councilwoman. We're thankful for support which we have, we're thankful for the moisture which Thou
Thankful for support which we have, we're thankful for the moisture which Thou hast
hast richly blessed us with.
richly blessed us with.
We would ask that Thou would bring common sense to us that we might serve in the capacity
We would ask that Thou would bring common sense to us that we might serve in the capacity of Riverton in the best of our abilities.
of Riverton in the best of our abilities. Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to live in this part of Thy vineyard and
Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to live in this part of Thy vineyard and say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ.
say this humbly, name Thy Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Would the City Secretary please conduct a roll call? Would the City Secretary please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Martin Canaan? Councilmember Martin Canaan?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez? Councilmember Lee Martinez?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson? Councilmember Kyle Larson?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson? Councilmember Sean Peterson?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon? Councilmember Holly Gibbon?
Here. Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker? Mayor John Lars Baker?
I am here. I am here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Mike Bailey? Motion to excuse Mike Bailey?
It has been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Bailey. It has been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Bailey. Any discussion on that? Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum. I declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda? Motion to approve agenda?
Second. Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda this evening will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Mayor and council, I'm Jim Gores. Just want to give you a brief update on the efforts that the group that I'm involved in have been leading on the toward maintenance and perhaps enhancement of the pathway system. We will be working in the coming couple of weeks with, with Mr. Weaver and hopefully with you, Mayor, and coming up with an approach to getting our organization organized to the extent that we can apply for some funding through, through YDOT and hopefully the two recreation boards here locally to come up with some funding that could be applied to maintenance of the pathway system so that we can preserve the investment the community has made in those pathways. So, we'll be back to you and have more information to share and maybe a clearer path to accomplish our objective. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
My gosh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gores.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ernie Over with CountyTen.com. And as you might have read, I am retiring at the end of this month and this is the last regular city council meeting I will be attending in the capacity as a reporter for County Ten. I just wanted to take a moment of, and say that I appreciate all the cooperation that I've received from the mayor and the council, the city staff throughout the many years that I've been doing reporting. It's not always been easy at times. We have kind of an adversarial friendship relationship, but it's been very nice. I appreciate all the emails, the telephone calls, you've called back, the text messages, all that stuff that goes into covering City Hall and the city of Riverton on a daily basis. I just wanted to say thank you for that. I don't think I'll miss the night meetings, but I'm certainly not riding off into the sunset and will, will be around, but I wanted to say thank you.
Good, thank you, Ernie. Just, just my comment is that I've always thought you treated us fairly, so, and got good coverage and, and a lot of public service done by County Ten. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
I just want to say thank you, Ernie. You've done a great job for us.
Thank you. All right.
Mm-hmm.
City Council, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
My name is Den, Dennis Schofield. My friends just usually call me Den. My wife, Mary, and I live here in Riverton. We've lived here for about ten years. We were born and raised in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I'm a graduate of the Philadelphia College of Art as an illustration major. I worked about twenty-five years illustrating mostly books, magazines, covers, and stories. We moved here because of my interest in Western art, Western art genre, and I like to produce pictures of nineteenth-century frontier America. And I have produced one painting which I call Keeper of the Peace. It's a portrait of a frontier peacekeeper in a small town in somewhere in the West, probably eighteen-seventies or eighties. And what I have here is a museum-quality print of that painting, limited edition. It's mounted and framed, ready to hang, and I would like to donate this to the Riverton Police Department, but I'm not sure how to do that. I'm not even sure if it's legal or how, how it would be appropriate, so I thought I'd approach the city council about it.
Well, I think all you have to do is say you'd like us to hang this on the wall down here at the city hall and we'd do it with our thanks.
All right, and where they hang it is up to them if it's, but it's all right for me to give it to them and then I'll just do that.
Sure, sure, it'd be wonderful.
All right.
You want to, you want to drag it out and show it to us and?
Present it to the acting chief?
Yeah. Okay, and we'd, and we'd have our, and we'd have our representative from the police department stand up and?
Well, that's. That's the name of my business people always want to see, because that's what I do, just make something to see.
Uh-huh, that's great.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you very much. Terrific.
Kind of looks like Chief.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that should be in the police department.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
It's a good place.
So, do you, Mr. Barley, do you suppose there's a place to hang that on the wall in the, in the, in the police department? Okay. Sure. Yeah.
Nice, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, terrific. You don't have any outstanding parking tickets or anything like that?
They're in the bottom of the box.
Funny. That's awesome.
Well, that's, that's very nice. We appreciate that. We do have, we do have quite a little bit of art in the city hall that's been donated to us or, or loaned to us even that's on display, and so we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Would the Finance Director please read the consent agenda, items by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May third, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of April, two thousand and sixteen, and the acceptance of Wind River Visitor Council Budget for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Are there any other items that require further discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Okay, recommendations from the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Checks written for payroll liability for four twenty-nine of two thousand and sixteen in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. And manual checks in the amount of eight hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, for a total of one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and six cents.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item on the, on the agenda is Mayor's proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas public works are important to help safety and well-being Wyoming citizens, and whereas these services can only be provided through dedicated public works professionals, including government and private sector employees who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, parks, water supply, water treatment, wastewater collection and treatment, and solid waste systems, buildings, and facilities essential for service, and whereas the efficiency of these dedicated professionals is influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Whereas two thousand and sixteen marks the fifty-sixth National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas this year's theme, Public Works, Always There, speaks to the pervasiveness of public works and the willingness of public works professionals to serve and always be there, now therefore I, John Lars Baker, Mayor of the city of Riverton, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as Public Works Week. In the city of Riverton, in recognition of the contributions of Public Works employees and as a witness thereof, I set my hand in the executive seal on this day, the seventeenth day of May, two thousand and sixteen. The next item of business is a public hearing and consideration of new restaurant liquor license application, Wyoming Smokehouse Doing Business as Smokehouse Burgers and Fries. Could we get the Finance Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office has received an application for a new restaurant liquor license for Wyoming Smokehouse LLC. The application has been certified as complete. The fees have been paid. Staff's recommendation is to approve the application for this restaurant liquor license.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Your Honor, I make a motion we open the public hearing for the consideration of the license?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item on the, on the agenda is Mayor's proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas public works are important to help safety and well-being Wyoming citizens, and whereas these services can only be provided through dedicated public works professionals, including government and private sector employees who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, parks, water supply, water treatment, wastewater collection and treatment, and solid waste systems, buildings, and facilities essential for service, and whereas the efficiency of these dedicated professionals is influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Whereas two thousand and sixteen marks the fifty-sixth National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas this year's theme, Public Works, Always There, speaks to the pervasiveness of public works and the willingness of public works professionals to serve and always be there, now therefore I, John Lars Baker, Mayor of the city of Riverton, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, as Public Works Week. In the city of Riverton, in recognition of the contributions of Public Works employees and as a witness thereof, I set my hand in the executive seal on this day, the seventeenth day of May, two thousand and sixteen. The next item of business is a public hearing and consideration of new restaurant liquor license application, Wyoming Smokehouse Doing Business as Smokehouse Burgers and Fries. Could we get the Finance Director's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The city clerk's office has received an application for a new restaurant liquor license for Wyoming Smokehouse LLC. The application has been certified as complete. The fees have been paid. Staff's recommendation is to approve the application for this restaurant liquor license.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Your Honor, I make a motion we open the public hearing for the consideration of the license?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with, with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Seeing nobody has brought, I make a motion we close the public hearing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of new restaurant liquor license for the Smokehouse Burgers and Fries.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion we approve the restaurant liquor license application for the Wyoming Smokehouse?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Larson?
What I, I know where this, the location is. I'm, I'm looking at what type of dispensing. I'm not real clear on, is this a, just like a commercial like up in the bowl where you can have liquor or whatever with your meal, or is this a separate dispensary or?
Yeah, it's a, my understanding is that it would be a, a restaurant liquor license, which means that they have to have a dispensing room that's, that's lined out on the license agreement, but they serve the alcohol at the table.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And a certain percentage, forty, sixty, sixty percent of the revenue has to come from food, right?
Right, okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is public hearing and consideration of ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero two and sixteen dash zero zero three, first readings, Riverton Municipal Code Title thirteen revisions. Could we get the business services manager's report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We, the city staff have performed a review of Title thirteen point zero four, billing procedure for public services, and thirteen point eight, zero eight, water service system of the Riverton Municipal Code. The, the review was conducted simply for clarification and identifying any errors and conflicts within the current, current code as it states. There were thirteen areas that were identified in our current code that we are asking for some, some changes on. There are small changes, however, it will help with some consistencies in, in translation of the code. The first item is thirteen point zero four dot zero three zero, and it is titled Termination of Service, and we're actually recommending changes to reflect the terminology of, of that, of that title. Termin, termination and discontinuous are synonymous terms and they're used throughout that particular section, so we are just trying to keep that consistent and, and change that all to discontinue, discontinuance of service. The second section is thirteen point zero four point zero four zero, payment arrangements. Currently, the, the current code reads that the customer service supervisor is the person that's allowed to enter into payment arrangements with our citizens when they need to make arrangements on their bills. We are requesting a change to add his or her designate that will allow our finance clerks also the ability to enter into payment arrangement agreements with our citizens. We have certain procedures that we follow with payment arrangements and they will be in compliance with the, the current arrangements that we have in place, so we're just allowing them that, that latitude to make arrangements with customers also. The next section is thirteen point zero four point zero five zero. Currently, our code reads that we charge twenty dollars for our return check fee. We are charging thirty dollars. That twenty dollars is a very old fee, so we would just like to update that within the code book so it reflects the current charge. We did do an analysis of return check fees that are currently being charged by other municipalities, and they all charge thirty dollars, so it's just a market rate change that we're requesting there. Thirteen point zero four one one zero, this does not exist in the current code. We are asking to add a statement in there with regard to base charges for services. In instances where multifamily residential units are serviced by one single water meter, the base charge for water in sanitary sewer will be billed for each unit, and it's, it's written in our definition of residence and resident, but it's not clear, so we wanted a clarification written in our code so it specifies exactly how that is being billed. The next section is thirteen point eight, zero eight point zero one zero, as far as definitions of the code. We are asking for modification of the definition of a property owner. It's a very long and lengthy legal definition. We're asking to shorten that, just meaning that the property owner means the person that has the legal title to the property as described by the records in the county courthouse. And then we also identified what a person is in accordance with the property owner definition, and then also added a definition for plant investment fee. The next change that we are requesting is thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero, agreement to rules and regulations and failure to comply. In our current code, those are actually two separate sections, and so we are asking to combine those two sections into one. There is not a single change in the verbiage, it's just combining two together. The second, the next change is thirteen point zero eight point zero eight zero, where the city is not liable for broken pipes or appurtenances. We're asking to remove this section from the code as Article two and four of the Riverton Municipal Code currently identifies service lines, meters, and responsibilities, so this section is redundant. It's listed in another part of the code book as well. The next section we're requesting a change on is thirteen point zero eight point one hundred, discontinuance of service for failure to comply with regulations. That again is one that we were actually combining into thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero, so we'll need to strike that section out of the code book. Thirteen point zero eight two hundred, fees. We have a pretty lengthy description of what our water service and tap fees are and our billing fees, and we're requesting, currently it's written in the code book as a table, in a table format, and the, the rates that are in there are outdated, and so we're asking to change the way that our fees are published in our code so that we don't have to update the code book each time we can change the rate by resolution and then post those rates out on our city website. And we can also just post them by advertisement, which we do when we change our rates anyway. And then that way, when our citizens reflect into our, on our code book for fees, they're not seeing outdated numbers and not having to flip through additional information in order to find what our current charges are. It'll all be publicly posted. The other thing that we were requesting a change on is to strike the section that identifies what our formula is for our rate calculation. Currently, we have, it's written that we shall adjust our fees annually in accordance with the variation of the Consumer Price Index, and on February first of each year we change it. I, I, I looked into some other municipalities on how they compute their formulas for their rates, and they don't publish it anywhere in their codes. Rates can be based not only on our, our current market conditions, but also any capital projects that are going on, and just different economical factors. In instances where multifamily residential units are serviced by one single water meter, the base charge for water in sanitary sewer will be billed for each unit. And it's written in our definition of residence and resident, but it's not clear. So we wanted a clarification written in our code so it specifies exactly how that is being billed. The next section is thirteen point eight zero eight point zero one zero, as far as definitions of the code. We are asking for modification of the definition of a property owner. It's a very long and lengthy legal definition. We're asking to shorten that, just meaning that the property owner means the person that has the legal title to the property as described by the records in the county courthouse. And then we also identified what a person is in accordance with the property owner definition and then also added a definition for plant investment fee. The next change that we are requesting is thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero. Agreement to Rules and Regulations and Failure to Comply. In our current code, those are actually two separate sections and so we are asking to combine those two sections into one. There is not a single change in the verbiage. It's just combining two together. The second, the next change is thirteen point zero eight point zero eight zero, where the city is not liable for broken pipes or appurtenances. We're asking to remove this section from the code as Article two and four of the Riverton Municipal Code currently identifies service lines, meters, and responsibilities. So this section is redundant. It's listed in another part of the code book as well. The next section we're requesting a change on is thirteen point zero eight point one hundred. Discontinuance of Service for Failure to Comply with Regulations. That again is one that we were actually combining into thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero. So we'll need to strike that section out of the code book. Thirteen point zero eight two hundred, Fees. We have a pretty lengthy description of what our water service tap fees are and our billing fees. And we're requesting, currently it's written in the code book as a table, in a table format, and the rates that are in there are outdated. And so we're asking to change the way that our fees are published in our code so that we don't have to update the code book each time. We can change the rate by resolution and then post those rates out on our city website. And we can also just post them by advertisement, which we do when we change our rates anyway. And then that way, when our citizens reflect into our code, on our code book for fees, they're not seeing outdated numbers and not having to flip through additional information in order to find what our current charges are. It'll all be publicly posted. The other thing that we were requesting a change on is to strike the section that identifies what our formula is for our rate calculation. Currently, we have, it's written that we shall adjust our fees annually in accordance with the variation of the Consumer Price Index and on February first of each year, we change it. I looked into some other municipalities on how they compute their formulas for their rates and they don't publish it anywhere in their codes. Rates can be based not only on our current market conditions, but also on capital projects that are going on and just different economical factors in the current environment. And so we would like to just be able to remove that section so that we have a little bit more latitude when we're trying to determine what our rates are going to be. Let's see. And then we're also including that they may be adjusted at such time by resolution of the city council following a public notice and hearing on each change so that our citizens will still be notified when there is a rate change that goes into effect. So we're not removing that from them. The next section is thirteen point zero eight three nine zero. That section is called Defacing, Injuring, and Bypassing. We would like to add just a small statement into that that says that city employees shall have access at any reasonable time to all premises supplied with any utility service by the city for purposes of examination in order to make sure that our material or our supplies that our meters have not been tampered with. We have come across a few lately where we have found that consumers have pulled their water meters and then they weren't registering usage. And this just gives us the ability to go in and inspect and make sure that everything is functioning as it should be and working as it should be. The next section, thirteen point zero eight four hundred, Meter Consumption Rates. This is the same thing that we were recommending that I just mentioned as far as rate codes. One of the rate codes are identified under the tap fees. This is the water fee section, but it's, the change is exactly the same for both sections. Thirteen point zero eight four seven zero is the discontinuance of service for failure to pay. Currently, our code reads that we have five calendar days after the due date to discontinue service. We would like to recommend that we change that to seven so that it is consistent with what we're doing. And then also include a statement that says that the failure to receive a utility bill does not relieve an obligation to pay. We have citizens who don't pay their water bills. They get their water turned off and they say they haven't received a bill. We send out a bill, we send out a second bill, we send out a shut-off notice. So we do take great care in making sure that our customers are notified before we shut their water services off. And then the last thing I have is thirteen point zero eight point five hundred, Fees for Reinstating Discontinued Services. Right now, our current shut-off notice says that that there is an after-hours fee if we have to go out after water department business hours, which says eight to five. And actually, currently, water service hours are seven to four. So we're just requesting to change that so that it reflects their hours. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Would the finance director please read ordinance sixteen dash zero zero two and sixteen dash zero zero three by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero two, on first reading by title only. An ordinance amending Title thirteen, Public Services, Revising Chapter thirteen point zero four, Billing Procedures for Public Services. Sections thirteen point zero four point zero three zero. Termination of Service, thirteen point zero four point zero four zero. Payment Arrangements, thirteen point zero four point zero five zero. Return Check Fee and Adding Section thirteen point zero four point one one zero. Base Charges for Services of the Riverton Municipal Code and Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinance in Conflict Therewith and Providing for an Effective Date. Proposed Ordinance Number sixteen dash zero zero three, on first reading by title only. An Ordinance Amending Title thirteen, Public Services, Revising Chapter thirteen point zero eight point zero one zero. Definitions. Sections thirteen point zero eight point zero four zero. Agreement to Rules and Regulations per Requisite to Commencement of Services. And thirteen point zero eight point zero eight zero. City Not Liable for Broken Pipes or Appurtenances. Thirteen point zero eight point one zero zero. Discontinuance of Service for Failure to Comply with Regulations. Thirteen point zero eight point two zero zero. Fees, Amounts. Thirteen point zero eight point three nine zero, Defacing, Injuring, Bypassing, etc. Thirteen point zero eight point four zero zero. Metered Consumption Rates. Thirteen point zero eight point four seven zero. Discontinuance of Service for Failure to Pay. Thirteen point zero eight point five zero zero. Fee for reinstating discontinued services of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and the hearing is now open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and council members, my name is Kate Martin. I am here to address the... There's a lot in that, in that group that you have there. And I think I'm on item number two or three. I'm not sure, I lost count after about the eighth one. But the one that is of concern to me is the definition of the defining a residence for billing purposes. And I'm afraid that probably I might have been part of the reason that precipitated all of that. About a year ago, I started a conversation with Mr. Butterfield about it and we went back and forth on it somewhat. And basically, the questions that I had at that time were, if you have a fourplex and you have one water meter and they want to charge the base rate for four, which I don't really have an issue about, but the city website has four water rates and billings. They have what they call a residential master meter. And it occurs to me that that should be something when multiple units are served by one water meter. And that's where we kind of went differences of opinions on it. It seems to me that the city provides a utility. It does say utility billing on their website. And that is a consumable item like it is power or it is gas. And there's a certain amount of water that you use and a certain amount of water that you discharge in the garbage and that's a whole nother subject. But it seems to me that the expenses for multiple units are tremendous. And I ask if they could give consideration to multi-units, which would be more than one. It'd be a duplex, fourplex, eightplex. We don't have many eightplexes. We have mostly duplexes and fourplexes and we do have a couple of thirty-unit buildings in town as well. But mostly for the smaller ones. And I received correspondence, I think we started that in April and it was in November that I received some correspondence back, where part of it, it says, it says, "Based on the research, there is no justification to allow a residential master meter rate that will pay for one minimum charge serving multiple residences." "That has not been a past practice nor is there a definition in code to support it." "If the city were to grant your request, the city would have to completely redo our rate structure because over one thousand of our accounts have one meter and serve multiple dwelling units." So I don't think that that's a small amount and I think there should be some consideration given towards that. I did receive a letter on, that was dated in May twelfth, Thursday, and received it Friday and I didn't have a great deal of time to address it for this very hearing tonight. And so I am here to ask you as the representatives of all of the citizens and the one thousand units that are involved in the city of Riverton, I'm not asking you to redo the rates. And I certainly understand that you have to have a base rate per unit. But where the rub starts is that the amount that you pay for each of the units. I would like for you to, as our representatives, to instruct the staff to come up with policies and procedures regarding master residential meters, which could be more than one. And I think there needs to be some definition as to if you have your base rate, which is what you have here, published on your website, of seventeen dollars and two cents per unit. That's fine, that's not a problem. Then you pay two dollars and thirty-six cents per one thousand gallons up to the first five thousand. That's fine. Under a master meter program, if I pay for the first five thousand gallons of water for a fourplex, I've paid for twenty thousand gallons of water, which would be more than adequate to pay for the watering of the lawns. And I ask if that was how they bill. And he said, "I think that is, but I don't think it is." I have a unit located at date fourteen, Mary Ann Drive, that last billed July twenty-first, used eighteen thousand gallons for the month. And the water bill was a hundred and ten dollars. Well, it's a four unit and if I paid the seventeen oh two and paid the other three or four dollars for the first five thousand gallons, so let's just round it up to twenty. I didn't have time to do exact. You should be around eighty dollars. And I did not exceed, it was eighteen thousand gallons. So that should be around eighty dollars, not a hundred and ten. Now, when you take that multiple times, it adds up. And I don't think, so what I think they're doing is that they're billing above the five thousand four times. So that particular unit, which sits on about an eight thousand square foot lot, it has around twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet of lawn area. It's smaller than most single-family dwellings and yet we're paying a significant amount more for watering the lawn. So it kind of decreases your interest in keeping your yard looking good. And that's, you know, I'd like for them to be attractive, if possibly can. And I think that there's also a question of equity in how you're charging for that water. That it seems like a person living in a higher density area is paying more for their service than someone who lives on a single-family lot. So, and I had fun here. I was cleaning out a house and I found a water bill and I think it's from nineteen ninety-one. So in nineteen ninety-one, a single-family dwelling and they used eight thousand gallons of water that month was eight dollars and fifty cents. So I know that we have inflation, which kind of brings me that I'm also going to take a little side note that I think, I do remember that when they tied the water rates to the cost of living or inflation, there was a reason for it because they were going up quite high. And that was probably sometime around then when it went from eight dollars, it probably doubled up. So, and I know it's expensive and I know it's more when it's a smaller area. Anyway, back to my request. It is that I would respectfully request that direction be given to the council to come up with procedures and policies regarding the master residential meter and be equitable about it. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Larson?
Kate?
Yes, sir.
So the eight fourteen has a single meter?
Yes, it does. It has a one-inch water meter. It serves four units. And here was one of the other things, and I don't know how we'd solve that. When you have a fifty percent vacancy or maybe you have three vacant, you can't turn the water off. So you have to pay water and sewer and garbage for all of them, whether you have one tenant or four. I don't know how to work that out. If you wanted to form a committee, I'd be happy to serve on that. I just don't know how you can work with that, but I do think you can work with the amount of water you use. The, as an example, I forgot here, sorry. On that eightplex, I think I did go over the gallons, usually the eighteen thousand. And that was during July when you'd have your heavy watering. Last year, it was hot, too. I have a duplex that has seven thousand gallons and the water for it was fifty. So again, the proportion of the water being used to the number of units and the number of area that we're watering is disproportionate.
Mia? Do you see any problems in working that type of thing out?
Oh, I absolutely have no problem with working it out. I just usually get the directive from the senior staff. I don't, I mean, we can make recommendations, but it does have to come through senior staff, through Stephen.
Your honor, in relation to the master residential meter, we have...
How many people on that right now?
There's currently four.
We have four people that are on that that are mobile home units. But they are billed exactly the same as a residence. So even though we have a master meter rate, we don't treat them any differently than a master, than just a residential meter. So, and really, when you look in code, there's no, when the code was originally adopted and the rates were published in there, a residential master meter didn't exist. It was just residence. The master meter was added at some point in a resolution years down the road. We don't even know how it got in there or why it's even in there because frankly...
But it is there.
It is there, but it's treated the same way as a residence. Truly, a residential master meter that I've seen in past cities that I've been at are serving people outside city limits. There's a meter up there and the water flows through there and that's our, we have no responsibility past that meter. And so then you're billing them for the water and that's it. Very different than in a city circumstance. So I'm not sure how that got in there, but it's not, it wasn't adopted by ordinance. It was adopted by resolution. It was just added. So that's what the master meter, residential meter is.
What I'm questioning is equity.
Okay.
If you've got one meter serving four and you're overcharged, there's no equity in that. If you're using less and being charged more, there's no equity in that. That's not fair. That's what I'm trying to say. And so in that, that we know the quantities which we are using exactly, yet we are charging more than the calculations show we should be charging, then there's no equity in that.
Your honor, we bill for every single-family home, we bill a base rate for water of seventeen dollars and two cents. For every thousand gallons of water billed up to five thousand gallons, you're billed two dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand gallons. In a multifamily unit where there are four, two, four, eight, however many units, they are billed seventeen oh two as a base charge per dwelling unit and two dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand gallons. Now, if we're talking about a fourplex apartment, they are actually allowed twenty thousand gallons at two dollars and thirty-six cents. So as far as an unfairness goes, they're being billed the same exact rate as a single-family home. And on the master meters, the rates are the very same rates as a single-family home. And then they're billed a base charge, which we call a multiplier for the number of units that are at that location. So the rates are one hundred percent consistent with what we would bill a single-family home.
Your honor, I don't understand why I had eighteen thousand gallons and paid a hundred and ten dollars. Should have been closer to eighty.
Your honor, she was, the bill for a hundred and ten dollars was for a fourplex unit? The base rate is seventeen oh two per unit, which equates to sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. And if she used eighteen thousand gallons of water, now mind you, with four units, she is allowed up to twenty thousand gallons at two thirty-six. So with eighteen thousand gallons of water, that usage billed was forty-two forty-eight, which is a total of a hundred and ten dollars and fifty-six cents on the bill. If I owned four homes, four separate, single-family homes on four separate lots, I would get an individual bill for each home and then my usage for eighteen thousand gallons would be the two dollars and thirty-six cents as well. So we're basically putting four separate pieces of property into one bill, in one bill because it's all located at the same property address.
Your honor, if you're paying four different ones, you have four minimums. And she said there was twenty thousand gallons on that minimum. So I still think that there needs to be, you're watering three thousand square feet. You're not watering twelve thousand square feet.
For the lawn?
For the lawn.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I picked a month that I knew that was a lawn month.
Okay, well, we'll study that.
Okay, that's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Your Honor, seeing that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the public hearing is now closed, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash zero zero two on first reading.
Your Honor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance sixteen zero zero two on first reading?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number sixteen zero zero two on first reading, is there any discussion? Is this, is this the one that has the rate in it?
Base charges, yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, we're going to discuss that between now and the next reading, right? Ready, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash zero zero three on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt ordinance sixteen dash zero zero three on first reading?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, mayor votes aye, and the motion passes, thank you. The next item is the Riverton Watering Splash Pad Group requests for funding, city administrator report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, the Splash Pad Group formed a little while ago to build a splash pad in Riverton City Park, the city became their fiscal agent on October twentieth, two thousand fifteen. The splash pad is here, they're wanting to request some funding. As you know, with a particular budget year and the decreased revenues that we're experiencing, the city doesn't have any funds to commit to the splash pad this year. However, staff is recommending that we use the Wyoming Community Gas Funds that we get every year, their disbursement, last year we got, or this year we got seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight, and the year before we got six thousand three hundred and seventy-five, and so it would be a recommendation for, from staff, is to use those monies towards the splash pad, thank you.
Thank you. Chair will enter, oh, let's see. I guess we'll have a motion and then discussion, huh? Okay, chair will entertain a motion? You what?
They're just presenting, right?
Well, no, they...
They're making a decision on...
Yeah, we're, I think we're looking for a motion here to commit the use of the Wyoming Community Gas Funds for a splash pad.
Your Honor, make a motion that we commit the funds from the Wyoming gas funds to the Riverton Splash Pad Group.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, huh, now, is there any discussion? If somebody, if somebody from the Splash Pad Group would like to come up here and, okay, and chew on us for a minute, you just get right after it, okay?
Good evening, thank you for allowing us into the meeting tonight, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what our goals...
Christina Olson, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, I'm Christina. We wanted to give you an idea of what our goals were and where we're at right now. Our fundraising group, through volunteer efforts, have raised about seventeen thousand up to this point, and our school district rec board grant is about twelve thousand five hundred, so we're sitting just barely under thirty thousand with those funds that we have secured. Our big goal that we're really hoping to make is to apply for a matching grant through the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund, they have previously granted money for splash pads before, it's federal funding, and they will match up to fifty percent of your total project cost. So, if we're looking at a total splash pad cost of around two hundred thousand dollars, we are hoping to apply for a hundred thousand dollars, and the application is due in December. So, if we have just shy of thirty thousand dollars, we have plans to continue to fundraise an additional fifteen thousand, we're applying for our First Interstate Bank Foundation Grant for five thousand, a Wyoming Community Foundations Grant for five thousand, and our Fremont County Rec Board Grant is pending for seven thousand dollars. Of course, it's a tough budget year, budgets are cut for them as well, so this is unsecured, but we're hoping for about thirty to thirty-two thousand dollars more through grant money. So that will put us about sixty thousand. So we are short about forty thousand to be able to apply for our matching grant in December, and I know it's tough and maybe hands are tied, but that is what we're asking for the council to approve, and I'm not sure how it works, if you can earmark funds for next year, if you can earmark forty thousand, I called the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Fund, I talked to the gal in Cheyenne, and she said, you need to have your part of the funding secured before you can apply for the matching funds. So, that's our plea, is for you to try your best to find a way to help us make that happen.
Your Honor?
Mr. Martin?
I have a suggestion for you.
Okay.
Right now, the rec board has given you, what, twelve thousand dollars, correct?
Right.
If you would come to the next meeting...
Okay.
And state your case, we might be able to come up with the balance to make your match.
Okay.
So that's, that's an avenue you can check.
Okay.
Our meeting will be the first Monday in June.
Okay.
So if you can come up with all your figures and come up to there, we'll, we have some money left over, so we will be, might be able to help you out.
Okay, up at the school district offices? No.
The meeting will be here, seven o'clock.
Okay.
In the back room, back there.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. And we are going full on ahead, we decided to, we're going to put a proposal together, and we will, of course, have to come to you to approve it, but we are going to start seeking out business sponsorships in large amounts, so that, we're a little nervous about relying on some of these grants coming in at full bore, but just one step at a time, this is where we're at right now, so...
Your Honor, I'll need all your figures for that, whatever, and if this is approved, the seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight tonight, we'll need that added into what you need.
When we come to the school board, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to playing in the park. And appreciate the effort that you have made in trying to pull this together and make it happen, you know, obviously, you can see that without your effort, it wouldn't take place, thank you. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, so, whenever that money, whatever that check mounts to, we'll pass that on, okay? The next item on the agenda is the Senior Center Contract Addendum, okay, Councilmember Gibbons report.
All right, so, I'm pleased to announce that we were actually able to come to an agreement, the Senior Center Agreement hasn't been changed in over twenty years, and so this is kind of a step forward. We've been working on the agreement for four to five months right now, the Senior Center Board, the Endowment Board, and then citizen, senior citizens input as well. The goal was to extend the funding for the endowment and clarify and simplify one section of the agreement, and the actual solution was trying to figure out how to extend the sixty-five thousand dollars, which is the remaining in the endowment right now. And so we have figured out a way to do it, we can extend it from one year to two years by doing a direct bill through the city for their electric and gas, that'll come out of the endowment, the city will then absorb all of the city utility bills, so it'll be the electric, the gas, or the, sorry, the water, the sewer and sanitation. So now, the actual addendum will read that the city shall be responsible for water, sewer and sanitation services, gas and electric services shall be direct billed to the city of Riverton during the term of this agreement. Said gas and electric services will be deducted from the endowment fund, with the exception of water, sewer and sanitation, which will be incurred by the city. Everybody was in a grants, it was honestly pretty easygoing discussion. We will be readdressing the actual fullness of the agreement in January of two thousand and seventeen, because you can only change it on odd years, and so we're going to simplify it from like nine pages to hopefully like two, and so I would appreciate the council's support for a minute action approval of the addendum effective June first.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion. You can make it.
I don't want to.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the addendum A with the Senior Centers effective June first of two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Larson?
Have we determined what, if we had a normal year, what that would do to the endowment funds by adding this?
It's going to save them about thirty thousand, so...
Save them, but I mean...
So save the endowment.
It'll save the endowment?
Mm-hmm, so instead of spending seventy thousand a year, they're only going to be spending thirty thousand?
How is that possible?
Because that was the agreement we came to, I mean, because...
If we're going to pay for the gas and the electricity out of the endowment fund, how has it been paid in the past?
The seniors have been paying it, all, this whole time, on top of all the rest of their operational expenses. So now, by us just paying the electric and gas out at the endowment, we take over the water, which saves them, it's like thirteen thousand dollars a year. So it'll extend it, giving them an opportunity to try to figure out ways to fundraise and get grants and that kind of stuff, over the course of two years.
Give them more breathing room.
Yeah.
Any else?
Your Honor?
Mr. Peterson?
Do we have a, it reads somewhere there, for as long as this agreement is, is this going to also be revised in two thousand and seventeen as part of the big one?
Yeah.
Or is this going to be a carry forward, and then the rest will be worked out?
No, come January, if they choose that they don't like this agreement part anymore, then when we go to redo the agreement, they will have the opportunity to change it at that time.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Big Bend, West Bend Intersection Drainage Improvement Project Bid Award, Public Works Directors Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of the management of the one percent funds, staff has worked with the force committee to look at needs across the city for roadway improvements and drainage improvements. As part of our force committee meetings, drainage need was identified at the intersection of Big Bend and West Bend. Currently, the asphalt is degrading in that area, and the concrete cross gutters are also degrading, in fact, we've had to patch them with asphalt several times just since my tenure. We also have an issue where we have some catch basins in the curb and gutter which are not located at the low point of the curb line, and so we have pooling problems and drainage issues at this intersection. In discussing these identified needs, excuse me, with the force committee, staff received direction to prepare plans and project documents for this improvement project. Staff went out last fall and did preliminary surveys and preliminary designs, from that we were also able to consult with Jim Gore's associates to receive further clarification on the intent of this project, to make sure that we were proposing the absolute best solution for this drainage issue. From that coordination with a local consultant, staff put together plans and specifications for this Big Bend-West Bend Intersection Drainage Improvement Project. The project was advertised for bid on April twenty-seventh and May fourth of two thousand and sixteen, nineteen contractors and suppliers downloaded the bid package, only three contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and bids were received and opened on May eleventh, two thousand and sixteen with the following results. Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at ninety-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, Jerry Bornhof Construction Incorporated of Riverton, Wyoming at one hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. Staff has reviewed the bid results to assure that the bids were responsive to specifications, and as such, staff recommends that the city council award the bid to Dave's Asphalt in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Currently, the one percent fund has approximately two million dollars in its account, after subtracting the current obligations from the total. As this is only the second project to be bid and potentially awarded for this summer's construction season, we have funds in the account, and they are available to be spent for this project. I do want to mention that the engineer's estimate for this project was at one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, so each bid came in below the engineer's estimate. It's a great time to be bidding and working right now. Therefore, again, we recommend that the city council of Riverton award this project to Dave's Asphalt. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, the chair will entertain a motion to award this bid.
Motion to award West Bend Intersection Drainage Improvement to Dave's Asphalt Company for ninety-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars? Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Larson?
Did the drainage on that particular location, there is a six-inch line on the bottom there that the irrigation water comes down, is there a way of emptying that accumulation of sand out of that without causing problems?
Your Honor, there's, as you move west on West Bend, there's an irrigation outfall from when the private irrigation companies, is not the right word, but that's the only word that's coming to me right now. Because of that outfall, you're right, there is a large accumulation of silt and sand and debris that moves down the gutters and eventually makes its way towards the inlets, as it currently stands, the only and best way to take care of that is through our cleaning process with factor trucks. We could design a silt trap at the bottom of the catch basin, that is basically, give or take about a three-foot drop below the flow line of the outgoing pipe. However, we have not designed this in the current project, we have designed to keep the inlets in place, so adding the silt traps to the bottom of these catch basins would require a change order to this project.
Because I, when I was there, living there, we emptied that out on a Sunday morning and filled both sides of the road with compact sand, and then three of us got a bill from the city for eighty dollars to sweep up the sand, but it was the only way we could get water to the back of our yards from that pipe. So, so it is going to be a problem, and I just, you know...
Your Honor, and just for clarification, this storm drain line, this improvement is separate from the irrigation line that you're referencing, you should have made that clarification.
Your Honor? Go ahead, Sean.
I guess, without Mr. Bailey here, I'll ask the question, does this ninety-nine thousand, it meets all the requirements, because if the engineer's bid is a hundred and thirty thousand, there's forty thousand difference right there, and thirty between the other two, so it's, it meets all, I know it says in there, but it just, it seems to me like something's missing.
They're hungry.
And if that's a great thing, great, let's, you know, let's do that, and then, do we know when they plan on starting it, and how long the project's going to take, have they said anything about that in the proposal?
Your Honor, after the notice of award is provided to the contractor, it will take approximately two weeks, maybe three, to prepare contract documents. approximately two weeks, maybe three, to prepare contract documents and then give the notice to proceed. You'll forgive me off the top of my head, I don't remember what we have in the contract documents for the length of this project. I imagine this is probably a sixty to ninety day project. I will verify and email the council with that answer.
Okay. Just hope we can give the residents a little bit of heads up on, stuff's gonna be torn up for a while over there in that corner.
Your Honor, if I may. As part of this construction, we will be adding two inlets on the west side of the intersection. Part of the problem that we have is the surface water in the area flows across the intersection and pools on the west, on the east side, excuse me. Our hope is at the very east end of West Bend, so it would be the west side of the intersection, if that makes sense. We will get that water below ground and pipe it to the existing catch basins on the east side of the road. We also will be including the addition of a cross gutter that will work diagonally across the intersection. In order to construct that, we will close the intersection for a period of time. That is the best way to construct this project, otherwise we would have to install the cross gutter in halves and restrict traffic because the concrete will require a certain cure time. To expedite the process, I feel that it is in our best interest to close the intersection entirely, provide proper notice to the residents in the area, and have them rerouted around that intersection and back onto Main as they travel out of neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Larson.
That, that particular subdivision, has that got two exits, that one onto College View and one onto Big Bend? So, so we're not gonna shut down College View during that period of time, obviously?
Your Honor, we will maintain access to the neighborhood, we just will restrict that specific intersection. College View will remain open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Airport mower bid award, Public Works Directors Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of our FAA Part 139 operating certificate, airport staff is required to perform certain maintenance operations at the airport site. This includes removal of snow, includes the mowing of weeds and the maintenance around the runway and the terminal. In order to do some of this maintenance, we require equipment. We currently have a mower that is aging and is due for replacement. This mower was put on our capital improvement plan, has been reviewed by the state of Wyoming, and was included in the budget process last year for, for bid. So with the approval of last year's budget process and also with the state of Wyoming Aeronautics Division staff, went ahead and prepared bid documents and specifications for the purchase of a new rotary front mower with attachments. The attachments are basically snow removal attachment, one is a blade and one is a broom. The request for bid was advertised on April seventeenth, April twenty-seventh, and May first of two thousand and sixteen. Bids were received and publicly opened, excuse me, publicly opened, May eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, with the following results. Stott's Equipment for a John Deere fifteen-seventy-five Terrain Cut mower at the bid price of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and nine, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. The next bid was from Midland Equipment Company. They provided two bids. The first bid was for a Toro Grandmaster thirty-two eighty model with attachments. This bid came in at thirty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. The second bid provided by Midland, excuse me, Midland Implement Company was a Toro Grandmaster three sixty. And this bid came in at fifty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. With the two different bids provided by Midland Implement Company, one unit was smaller than the other, and this unit did not meet the specifications of the bid documents. It did not meet for engine size, it also did not meet for some of the other accommodations in the bid docs, for example, air conditioning, air conditioning. Therefore, it is not deemed responsive to bid specifications. That has no real bearing as far as the low bid of this award. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council awards the bid of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents to Stott's Equipment for the purchase of a John Deere fifteen-seventy-five Terrain Cut with comfort cab and front mower deck broom and snowbladed, with, snowblade attachments, excuse me. The purchase of this mower, again, was budgeted with the state of Wyoming and the city of Riverton at a cost split of ninety-ten respectively. The state of Wyoming will pay for the majority of this purchase. Delivery of this will occur in fiscal year seventeen, and so we are carrying over the budget funds into next year. We do have sufficient funds budgeted for this purchase, and the cost breakdown is as follows. From Y dot Aeronautics, their ninety, ninety percent portion would be thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Therefore, the remaining ten percent that would be owed by the city of Riverton towards this purchase is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. We hoped to have bid this purchase earlier in the year, however, with the lack of clarity with the situation of state budgets, it was delayed until we had full approval, approval from the state of Wyoming to bid this and have concurrence that they would participate in their ninety percent portion. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, we'd make a motion to...
Did we do that?
We, I don't know.
No, we haven't done that.
No.
Okay.
Motion to purchase a rotary mower with attachment from Strohls Equipment, rotary front mower with attachments for thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents with the state paying ninety and the city of River, Riverton paying ten.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I have one question.
Mr. Peterson.
Where is Midland Implement Company from?
Your Honor, that's a company out of Montana.
Montana, okay. And Strohls is from Riverton, right?
Your Honor, that is correct.
Thank you.
That's the one down the street, the old John Deere that's moved.
North of town.
Yeah.
That's all I have. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The city adminis, administration carpet project bid award. City administrators report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. We've observed some signs of wear in our city carpet here in City Hall. It's amazing what our facilities people have done for carpet that's been in here since the remodel. I mean, when you really walk around, it's amazing, and it still looks actually pretty good. We've been trying to put some money in the budget to replace that, but due to the fiscal downturn and revenues down to meet expenditures, we had budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for this. We had to use twenty thousand of it for the security access and then another for failing copier. And so it's a recommendation from staff that we reject all bids for this project due to budget constraints. And we will have a savings of twenty-five thousand dollars in this budget year that we need. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion. And what we're gonna do is, this is a rare opportunity to make a negative motion, right?
Yeah.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we reject all bids.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item is council committee reports, council members' roundtable. Ms. Gibbon.
Oh, I already did mine. We're good.
Okay. Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, just a reminder, this weekend, the twentieth, the Splash Pad is doing a kid bike race competition for kids, by kids. So hopefully we have decent weather, get out, support that, help these ladies and gentlemen out there, help them get this splash pad built. And then also, just to shout out, we got a bunch of our high school students who qualified for state this year that'll be going up to Casper for track to meet. So if you see them, congratulate them, there's a lot of good accomplishments going on and they're representing the city of Riverton very well everywhere they go. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Larson.
Your Honor, I have too, I attended a, the Riverton Band Concert in Layton, Utah on Saturday, and the junior high school band took first place in a regional meet, which was pretty nice, since my grandson was playing the flute. I liked that. Second thing is the waste management or waste has signaled to us that they're going to cease recycling glass and put it into the landfill. And that will no way reduce any landfill space since the landfill space in Lander will cease to exist. And when they close it, it'll have more than they needed. So they're going to do that. Secondly, I need, I think we need to really look hard at recycling as a, I know it's a sacred thing and it's a sacred cow, but at this point in time, it makes no sense to recycle at all. We are, in the city of Riverton, twenty percent recycle, eighty percent don't. So the eighty percent are paying for the twenty percent that don't care about it. And secondly, it doesn't make any space in our landfills not to recycle. We are chasing a dream with about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of expenditures for five percent of the waste stream. And I know that it would be nice to be able to use that money productively versus chasing a dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, we had the rec board, Fremont County School District Number Twenty-Five Recreation Board meeting Monday night, and all we did was pay bills. And just one more item here, I'm asking everybody to keep your thoughts and prayers for my grandson, Ethan Arnold, who is being deployed back to Afghanistan on May twenty-second. Thank you.
Nothing. City administrator?
One thing I learned at the solid waste board meeting, that probably some people don't realize, is that the glass issue, it was kind of announced, and maybe I knew this, maybe I didn't, but the glass, even though you thought you were recycling it, you weren't really. So you take it down to the bin and throw it in there and think that you're doing a good deed, and they were crushing that up and sticking it in the landfill. So it really wasn't being recycled at all. Just, our, our budget meeting's scheduled for next Tuesday, and so at five-thirty, we're gonna start at five-thirty, and hopefully that'll work for everybody. I haven't heard back from anybody saying that that's, that's a problem. And if you have any additional questions or you wanna meet with staff, give me a call and we'll set up a time and we can sit down and talk about anything and, but we'll be ready for Tuesday night. Thank you.
Your Honor, one question.
Mr. Larson.
If by chance, the waste board grows some strength in determination and reduces the from partial to no, how would we, what would we do in our budget with that excess that we budgeted for? Would we cease to, to utilize that or what? What are our contingent plans?
Your Honor, yeah, we'd have to look at that and determine, I mean, if they completely get rid of it, or we don't have an option, then obviously our curbside recycling would cease. And, and then obviously our incentive, our five-dollar incentive that goes on the bill would, would cease. And then that would just go into reserves to help pay for future capital projects related to another garbage truck or those kind of things. Right now, we're budgeting as if it's going through because they're not gonna make a decision until the mid-July, when we've already adopted our budget.
Your Honor. A follow-up on that question. Do we have enough ninety-gallon containers to get rid of, to, to replace the forty-five gallons that a lot of people that are recycling are using?
Your Honor, no. We currently have an excess of ninety-gallon containers, but we probably would need to order more to, to cover those replacements.
I've, I've been invited to attend the Arbor, Arbor Day celebration this Saturday, and I won't be able to do that. It's at ten o'clock in the morning on Saturday. And, and I'm hoping that there's somebody in the city council that can go to Arbor Day and, and accept, what are we gonna accept? Mr. Butterfield, a certificate for Tree City or something?
Your Honor, that's correct. You would be reading the proclamation for Arbor Day and then accepting the Tree City award for this year.
Okay.
Your Honor, I, I am gonna be there. My scouts are doing the color guard, so I can, I can attend it and be there if no one else wants to.
Good.
I'll put it that way. Nobody else wants to go there, I can do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Terrific. Okay. We've got pre- eclipse coming up on Thursday, and that's gonna take up a big chunk of the day. I just, it's just absolutely fascinating when, when they talk about that, you know, this is over a year away, and, and people are already, people are already renting their houses out and that type of thing for places for people to stay. And thi, this is a, this is a, well, must be gonna be a huge thing. And so we, you know, so at any rate, here's this planning meeting that's coming up on Thursday. And, and so anybody that wanted to go to that, you're gonna talk, right? You're gonna, you're gonna go and, and welcome everybody and say how excited Riverton is to be part of it, okay? And anybody else that wanted to participate, free lunch.
That's gonna be up at...
The casino. Okay?
At ten-thirty to four.
Ten-thirty to four. Okay? And after that, there's a chamber open house. So you could go up there and have lunch, and then you could eat dinner, too. You never have to leave. You could just, just go from one right to the next, okay? And, and so I think that's, I think that's the, the items of...
Your Honor, was there anything with that, the dialogue? I saw that one email, or is that further down the road?
That's, yeah, that's a week away. Okay? Oh, yeah, okay. That's good. Thank you for reminding me. That is on, that's on Thursday, and it's gonna be, so that's what, let me, let me look at my calendar here. You know, we have these, these dialogue meetings with, all across the county, with the Department of Justice. And, and so the twenty-sixth, I believe, is the day. Yes. Okay. This meeting is gonna be at the Arapaho Tribal Housing Office. It starts at nine o'clock in the morning, and it's gonna run through noon. So we think three hours maybe is gonna get that done. At any rate, it's gonna be a debriefing of the facilitators who were, who participated in all of these sessions, and go down through all of the notes that they took and that type of thing, and see what things could be done that might, that might solve some of the tensions that we have here on the reservation, between the reservation, Riverton. So I'm planning on being there. I know a few of you made one or two of those meetings, and if you've got an interest in seeing what the outcome there is, you could, you could, let me know. You could, you know, be welcome to attend that, I'm sure. So Stephen, you're planning on going, and Chief, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be there. Any, anybody else in council, though, that's interested, could attend. All right? Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I can make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned at, uh, eight-twenty-five.